Hey, good evening. This is a public hearing and public informational meeting of the Gardner Planning Board. First order of business, I will read the meeting notice into the minutes. In accordance with Article 11 of the City of Gardner Zoning Code, Chapter 675-1170, Special Permits, and Article 10 of the City of Gardner Zoning Code, Chapter 675-1010, Site Plan Review, and 675-1070 Marijuana Establishments. Notices hereby given that the Gardner Planning Board will conduct the public hearing and public informational meeting on Wednesday, January 11th, 2023 at 7:00 PM in the Hubbard Conference Room of the Manca Annex, 115 Pleasant Street, Gardner, Mass., to consider the special permit and site plan review application submitted by Seven Point of Massachusetts Incorporated, 93 Route 37, Edgewood, Illinois. The special permit and site plan review applications are for a retail marijuana establishment located at 320 West Broadway, Gardner, Mass. All persons interested in this matter or who desire to offer testimony are invited to attend the hearing. Project submittals can be reviewed in the Department of Community Development and Planning, 115 Pleasant Street, Gardner, in Room 201 of the Manca Annex. All right, Mr. Beauregard, any preliminaries before I invite our applicant to the floor?
Well, as the board knows, this project was previously approved. The building permit has expired along with the special permit, so the applicant is back in front of the planning board to reapply for the site plan approval and special permit.
Very good. All right, with that in mind, I would invite our applicant to the floor for the presentation, please.
Good evening.
All of those. For the record, Bill Hannigan and Hannigan Engineering, I'm just going to kind of briefly touch on the site plan aspect of things. This is actually a strong draft of the ASG plan for the property, so we're getting ready to finalize the overall project. And just to point out, the area where the proposed marijuana retail facility will be will be in the lower half of what's known as the Williams Building, 320 West Broadway. There's ample parking around that site. In one of the previous submittals we had made for the previous special permit, it was going to be a secured gated van area that would be surrounded and enclosed for only access for the deliveries. That's no longer a requirement of the state, so we're basically designating this last slot as a delivery bay, if you will, which will still be with a van. They'll park there, the deliveries will be made in and out of the building in the same door that we had previously planned. We won't have to do the extensive work that we thought we were going to have to do at that original timeframe. The only addition to the site plan that we're proposing is right now there's a fence that goes around the perimeter. There is a fenced-in, enclosed, all of its solid wall, vital white fence. There's one section that's not completed. We thought that that would make sense, just to complete that and add that last section of fence between the dumpster and the building. That's really the only point that you'd have any butters that would be looking in onto the facility, so that way we would close that one gap. That's on the sketch plan that we submitted with the application, but just a reference to the overall site, that's really what's happening from a site plan perspective. The next section is what David Miller will go over, and that's really about the internal layout of the facility. And I also brought some of the full building plan packages, so there's a lot of plans in here and the like.
Now you're here, where's that fence going to go? So it's going to be from the corner of the building?
Yeah.
Yep.
It's open right now.
Yeah, from the corner of the building to the, and then it'll curl back into the dumpster right now. This is the only place to raise the fence.
Will there be like a doorway here to access the rear?
Nope, we can access it from the front. The door, the door that they're going to go in and out of is right here.
Right, but if there's an emergency in the fire department needs to get back there?
We could, we could place a door there. We could place a gate there. Yep.
Like a mangate? I wouldn't recommend that.
Yep. With that, I turn it over to Dave.
Good evening. So my name's David Miller. I'm here representing Seven Point of Mass. Just a little bit of a background for you all. So we had originally, when we received the original special permit, we had brought in a partner to help us with funding to build out the store, which we had full confidence in at the time that we'd be able to accomplish the project. The cannabis market has changed dramatically, not just in Massachusetts, but everywhere, and funding has been difficult for these projects, not as easy as it was. And they weren't able to, you know, they're actually a multi-state operator that we were working with, so they're in other states as well as Massachusetts. And they have a lot of facilities open at this point, and their funding landscape changed a lot. So that's why we really didn't get through the project in a timely manner as we hoped. So obviously, we came back and met with various individuals here in Gardner to explain that, and after getting advice through Trevor and the planning board, we decided to reapply so that we could do it, that would be the cleanest way to do it, and then we could get in front of the board again. And we brought in essentially a new partner named Cannapeneurs. Todd Sullivan and Frank Marr are both here tonight from Cannapeneurs. And they're going to tell you a little bit about themselves, but they are local, you know, they're from Massachusetts, they're based here. A lot of the principals actually grew up in this area. So they're from here, they also have a couple of, well, one store open already, a retail store open, and one which hopefully will open in April, so it's very close. One store's in Raleigh, that's open up in Raleigh, and the others in Mendon. So they're really excited about being involved with us in this project for Gardner. So Bill had given you information about the site at this point, which really, not much has changed at all from the first submission. So we, when we got our building permit through Roland the first time, that's when we supplied all the building plans and schematics. And that's what is here right now, because really nothing's going to change, for the most part, from those original plans, other than Cannapeneur will be, you know, coming in and working closely with us to build the store out and help run the store as well. So. So the floor plans, I know that Todd may want to also speak to this part of the discussion if you have questions about the floor plan, but essentially, the way the store is set up, obviously, you have to have inspections from the state and follow all their guidelines regarding security and layout. So this basically accomplishes that already. And we also have spoken with Chief McAvine, and we provided him our security plans. He needed to give us a letter for this application for you guys here. And when we get close to opening the store, he'll certainly be coming in to check on camera placements and procedures before we get a permit to occupy the facility. But we'll be following all state guidelines, and he's pretty happy with those guidelines already, because they're quite strict in Massachusetts, as you know. So you would come into the store here in the front, which is a check-in area. And the first thing that happens here is, this is a secure area, the first thing that happens here is you'll have to show your, you know, your ID and prove that you're old enough to, 21 years old, before you can come in. There will be an entrance here that you would be buzzed in after security. There's also an exit area, all inclusive in this. So when you're in the store and shopping, and then you leave, you'll be coming out the same way you came in, but there would be one door here, but you'd be checked in here and buzzed into the store here, and you'll come out here when you leave. So it's two separate doors. The state really likes that, rather than having one door, which could get confusing for customers. So essentially, you'd come into the store, you'd also have to verify at the point of sale that you're 21 additionally, again, with your license, before you're able to buy anything, so there's two checks there. This is an area with various cases to showcase products. There's a lot of ways to set this up, but there'll be product out here. All the product has to go back in the vault at the end of the day. The state doesn't allow anything to stay out, so if anything was in here and it didn't go back in the vault, that's because it's non-infused. You know, it could be an edible product that's not infused with anything, and that would be allowed to stay in there, but anything that has cannabis goes back into the vault, the vault's back here. So every night, everything comes off the floor. In the morning, when they come into the store, they take it back up. So essentially, here's the point of sales. This is a consultation room for anyone who wants to sit down and talk about, you know, needs and products that they might be interested, have questions for the budtenders, and they want some privacy, well, that area will allow for that. But otherwise, you'd have roaming budtenders to help with customers if they have any questions. They'll be able to come in, and there'll be menus on the wall, there'll be TV screens that will have information for customers. Some of the customers will come in, they know exactly what they want, they will have already ordered online, and they'll come right in, and there'll be an express area for them to just go and pick up their order and leave. But some customers will be new to the experience and want to come in and talk to a budtender and get information about what they might be looking for and learn, and they'll be able to come in and just talk to the budtenders and ask some questions. So this whole area, right up until the point of sales and through to the bathrooms, is available to customers, of course, you can't get into the point of sale area, that's all cordoned off, locked. There's card readers for you to get through any doors within the store, and only certain individuals in the store will have access to, you know, employee areas, right? So here are the bathrooms for customers as well, but this whole area here is basically the store, and everything is off limits to any customer. So there's office space back here, there's security, an area for security, there's cameras, somebody has to be in that security area and be able to see the cameras, watch the cameras. Cameras also, state requires that you are taping everything. You also have to have backup for a power outage, for example, so that the cameras are always functioning and you don't lose that ability. And yeah, so, and here's the vault, where all the product stays. So any deliveries that come into the store, which essentially will be coming in over here, as Bill Hannigan had mentioned, any deliveries that come into the store, product gets checked in and goes right into the vault. State has a very, very tight metric system, it's called the metric system, which keeps track of every product. So your inventory has to be exact every day. Yeah, so any questions about it, any of this, the layout of the store?
No.
Or other questions?
Yeah, with reference to the overall project, assuming the board moves to approve the definitive site plan and the special permit. When do you think you'd pull your building permit?
So when we talked to Roland, we were, he advised that we could queue that up and have the application all there, just in case we receive the approval, and that we could pull a permit right away. But we pulled back a little bit on that, because, just to make sure if we want to have any variations to this through Cannapeneur, but it's going to be very soon. So if we get our approvals, I mean, maybe Todd would like to speak to some of this, because Cannapeneur, again, is going to be working closely with us on the funding side and the build-out.
So I'm Todd Sullivan from Cannapeneur. We estimate it'll take about 30 days to get firm construction quotes. Once those quotes are received, we pick a construction company, we will file for the permit immediately. After we receive, assuming we receive approval here tonight, and the outreach meeting we're doing Friday goes well, we would start the application process with the state immediately also. Those can run contingent, we can build out the dispensary while we're going through the application process, because our architect, George, has done probably 20 of these in the state, so we're very sure that whatever these designs are, it's going to meet the state's approval in every aspect. I estimate 12 to 16 weeks construction time, and then it's anywhere between three to four months for your final approval from the state. There's a series of inspections we go through once we finish construction. One's called a post-provisional license inspection, where they come in and they examine our cameras, our security measures, our point-of-sale systems. If that's approved, or there's any modifications to make, we make those, they come back and inspect it again. We then bring the product, a small amount of product, and the state comes back and does a final inspection, and they test our handling procedures, how we take in inventory, how we process our inventory, how we check people out, our sort of inventory. After that, we wait for the next monthly meeting with the CCC, and then we get a tweet and an email saying you can open in seven to two hours if we're approved. So I personally would like to have this open by the fall. I think that's a fair timeframe. The only things that would screw us up would be if the state inspections can go longer. They have 30 days to review us, but if they take 45, there's no repercussions, so sometimes it takes a little longer. And we have had problems in the past with supply chain issues with products, I'm sorry, with construction materials. That has dramatically dropped over the last two years, but for instance, we waited 30 weeks for doors at one of our dispensaries during the pandemic, because supply chains was low. Most of those problems aren't existing anymore, so we expect 12 to 16 weeks. This is probably the easiest build-out we've done. Everything else we've done has been complete rehab to our facilities, our Raleigh dispensary, we had to put a mission on, our Mendon dispensary that's going to open up probably in April, we had to basically redo part of the whole building when we took it over, because we purchased that property. This will be the fastest build-out we've done, because it's a great location, it's a great facility, and we expect it to go pretty easily.
So building permit pulled, how many days after the special permit?
We have to wait to get the, with the outreach, but that issue, I believe, is a 20-day waiting period after that before it's signed. So we would send this out for construction quotes. If this is approved here, we would send it out and have that approval process happening, that quote process happening while the 21 days wait, and we would file for the building permit immediately after receiving the approvals and the 21-day period being over.
Right. So we're having a second community outreach meeting, that's what Todd was referring to on Friday, that we've set up. And we had to put proper notice into the paper, similar to the advance of a meeting like this as well, so.
Our goal is to have this open before the fall. We just received today another host community agreement for Framingham, another project that we're going to do. That project, quite frankly, is going to take quite a bit longer, but we would, I would like to have this open for the fall.
And substantial completion?
I would like to have it completely open by the fall.
Right, but I mean, as far as substantial completion of the project, because I know with the CCC, there's only so much control you have, so, but you can get to substantial completion of the project itself on your own time.
Yeah, I'll give you an example, our Mendon facility.
How long do you think it's going to take?
So it'll take, I'll have a firm answer for you when I get the construction quotes back. I'm estimating 12 to 16-week build-out, figure 30 days to get quotes, so four or five months from now should be done, assuming everything goes well. We do have inspections along the process we have to go through, and, you know, the state is part of that process, they issue us a post-provisional, they issue a provisional license, they have inspections for, so, again, they can delay us a month or here or there, they come out right away, then it goes quicker. A lot of this is out of our hands, but what we can do, we will do as fast as can. I really want this open.
I'm just curious, what kind of license do you have now to proceed from the state? So this is all kind of new, obviously, marijuana. So what kind of license do you have now that you're able to proceed with this?
So the host community agreement is what we need from the town to proceed with the state. So the host community agreement, the special permit are what we need from the town, and we need to do what's called an outreach meeting, let the community come together, we're doing that Friday at 6:00. They can voice any concerns, we can answer their questions. Typically, those are not attended by anybody, or maybe one or two people. So that's all we need, is what we need is stuff from you people first, then we go with the state. When we put our application in, technically, then you go through architectural view with the state, meaning they will review these plans and say, you can do it. We built both our dispensaries before they approved it, because we have faith in our architect that he's designed these facilities to the state, and we've never had a problem. So we will go through the application process with the state. Why we're building out the dispensary, because all we need is a special permit and the host community agreement, the town and Gardner to do that.
Yeah, we're hesitant to say that we can do it quickly because of those elements, but we, there is a chance that things could go smoothly, and you get it done quicker and get open. That's the goal of us, as well as, of course, for you guys.
But I'm happy to communicate regularly with anyone. If we're facing delays or things out of our control, I'm happy to communicate that with anybody here, unless, you know, if we're going to be late, why? If it's supply chain issues, if it's licensing issues, if it's, you know, we're waiting six weeks for inspection instead of three, I'm happy to keep you guys.
Yeah, and we can certainly keep, we can certainly keep Trevor up to date as each piece of this is happening, so that he's more aware of.
I would highly recommend maintaining liaison with Mr. Beauregard's office as you go forward.
Once we get the construction estimates, I can give you a very firm timeframe based on the construction company when they should have things done.
Just to follow up to your.
Well, my other question would be, how long is this license good for, the one that they're applying for?
Well, so.
Or this building permit?
Seven Point has a provisional license at this point, don't you?
Yep.
So this project does have a provisional license with the CCC.
The medical piece.
I think that's what a member of Cormier was actually.
The medical, the medical piece has the provisional license. We're not medical, we're adult use, so we have to go through a different licensing process. But that won't, the licensing side will not slow us down, it's only typically the construction side that slows us down the most, and then the post-licensing inspections, they can take two months or four months.
And the state, the state is relying on the City of Gardner also to control the process in terms of, if we have those pieces that Todd has described, which we do, I know Mayor Hock signed the original host agreement.
That was 10 years ago.
Not quite.
It's been updated though.
I actually had a little more hair, actually, when I started this process, but anyway, they'll, they'll let us go ahead, as long as you guys will let us go ahead, and nothing will change in that regard.
Yeah. The state only really cares about.
It's been updated. Yeah, I think it was updated in 2019, 2020.
Yeah, we, we had a new, I did the original, are you talking about the HCA?
It's a five-year agreement.
So I did the original, yeah, the original for medical, and then when the adult use came in and the zoning was changed, Trevor, you did the amendment, then we went back and did another host agreement also with Mark.
Mr. Cormier.
Question is, the community outreach meeting that you're supposed to have Friday, was that supposed to be done prior to meeting last night?
No, so we, we actually didn't really need to do another community outreach meeting technically, because we did one already, and because it was submitted in a timely manner to the CCC, that information with the original application, we didn't have to, but we decided it'd be a good idea to do everything again. So we, we put that in motion as quickly as we could. This meeting actually came as quickly as it could too for us, and that was as soon as we could get it booked. But I will say that the last one that we had, nobody came.
Watch your head, Dave.
Yep. So nobody had come to the first one, but we were doing it again so that we cover that again for the city as well as the state.
So Steve, it's not a requirement of our zoning, but it is a requirement of the state CCC.
And since there was such a time lapse here, we thought it was a good idea also to just have it again, and Cannapeneur's going to be there as well, so they put a face on that as well.
Any other questions, gentlemen on the board?
I have a quick question on the, this packet that we have here, the architect is, I can't really read it.
Chad Hansen.
Is that the same architect that is going to be submitting the building permit?
Different, so Matt.
Matt McGeorge.
Matt will be the architect.
So, yeah, okay.
That was the letter, yeah. That was the letter, except for Matt.
And that'll be all cleaned up for Roland.
So will these plans change? Will he be using the same plans?
Right, we had him go through everything, pretty much, he said.
These are the plans he actually reviewed.
Yeah, correct.
He reviewed all the plans.
Correct.
And so, but will he be drafting up his own plans to submit?
Yes, yes, yes. We just didn't have that for tonight.
Our understanding from speaking with Matt McGeorge and the architect is, while he will necessarily have his own plans with his own stamp, he's reviewed these, and he said they're actually very good plans that comply with the Cannabis Commission regulations, and it's not his intention or ours to make any material changes, we might do some mill work different or things like that.
Can you just mention your name and affiliation?
I'm a partner of Cannapeneur Partners.
Thank you. Thanks.
So actually, we're saying he's just going to put his name on this permit, yeah? I mean, does these plans here?
Correct. We made some, we made some, we made some visual, millwork and stuff like that. I don't envision any substantive changes at all to these, they're actually really And honestly, changing them just delays us, so I don't want it to lay, so I want it to open.
Probably costs a little money too, right?
A little bit, yeah. They can be expensive architects.
Yes.
All set?
Yeah, all set.
Any other gentleman? All in? Very good, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
All right, as this is a public hearing at this point in the meeting, I would ask if there are anyone here from the public who wishes to speak in favor of this project? Is there anyone here from the public who wishes to speak in favor of this project? Is there anyone here from the public who wishes to speak in favor of this project? Hearing none. Is there anyone here from the public who wishes to speak in opposition to this project? Is there anyone here from the public who wishes to speak in opposition to this project? Is there anyone here from the public who wishes to speak in opposition to this project? Hearing none. Public hearing and public informational meeting is closed. At 7:26, we can transition directly into our regular meeting. First item of business is approval of minutes from November 9th, since we didn't have a December meeting.
Make a motion to accept the minutes as second.
Which I made in second to accept the meeting minutes from November 9th. By voice vote, please, all those in favor.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passed. All right, new business, what we just heard, Seven Point in Massachusetts. We actually have, if it pleases the board and we decide to vote tonight, we actually have two votes in front of us, the definitive site plan, and then vote on the special permit, because the zoning code actually says, in order to approve a special permit, you have to have an approved definitive site plan. So in the past days, we've actually kind of rolled those into one, well, actually, to be strictly adhering to the zoning code, one should follow the other. So we would vote yea or nay on the definitive site plan, and then move to vote yea or nay on the special permit. Any discussion on what we've heard tonight? Questions, comments, thoughts? Beauregard.
Steve, do you have something? So in our development review committee meeting, the building commissioner brought up some concerns that he had with the project and timing, and he was fairly adamant that he would not want to be put in a position to have to extend the building permit again, because in the last, last time, he did extend it for six months, which kept the special permit going also at the same time, but when it did actually end up, ending, the special permit did too. So what I was thinking, Mr. Chairman, you brought it up with the proponent in the public hearing, maybe putting a condition or conditions on the project with respect to time, and, you know, the, applying for the building permit within a 30-day period after the approval is made, that includes a 20-day extension period, and also substantial completion of the project from this six-month period from that same timeframe. And I was wondering if that's something the proponent would be open to?
Within 30 days to apply for the permit, I think that's reasonable. My only concern over the six-month extension completion is, when you're building anything nowadays, there's a lot out of your control. Maybe we could have a six-month, but obviously have some sort of leeway if we can show you there's, hey, you know, we need tempered glass and tempered glass on a 14-week delay, we can't get it. You know, I go back to our previous experience in Raleigh, we did 36 weeks for doors.
We're doing nine months, Trevor.
So I think the, I think the planning board would be flexible with that. I mean, I'm not going to speak on your behalf, but I mean, they have been in the past. I mean, I'm not going to speak on your behalf, but I mean, they have been in the past. I mean, if you're willing to come in and meet with the board and explain to them that you do need additional time above the, on that six months. Yeah, I'm sure they'll be open to listening.
But it does, it sounds to me like they already know it's going to be more than six months because of inspections. So I, I, I'm just curious whether the board would consider a nine-month period.
But he just said.
He said the fall.
Well, he's.
That's over, that's already over, six months.
Twelve to sixteen weeks build out, you estimated? I thought that's what I heard.
Yeah, so four to five months.
Build out's complete, not, not licensed.
All right, substantial completion.
You don't say, you don't say it's open.
Oh, no, 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 no.
You just want to say that we're actually building something. Right.
Yeah, well, watching the substantial completion of the, to the reasonable time.
I think that makes sense.
Given the past process and all that.
We will be very proactive with any, any delays, any material delays are going to slow us down. We'll come to the board, we'll send you emails and let you know if we're going to be late, why we're going to be late, what we're doing.
And if, obviously, if you're making substantial progress and you need to come back to the board because of couple issues that you're facing that are out of your control, I'm sure the board will be open to this.
I think the board, you could expect flexibility from this board as long as we're kept, kept informed.
Absolutely, yeah.
Gentlemen?
Absolutely.
Is the board comfortable with that?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
I just relate to the middle of the elementary school we just got done. And there were logistical issues, uh glass wasn't available, a circuit panel, we had to wait another twelve weeks or uh things like that, that actually held up the completion of the school. So those things are real and I for one understand that. So certainly we go along, if you run into things, we'll.
From our part, if we experience those, we'll be proactive and say, hey, by the way, we're going to have to wait X amount of time for this product. So it's gonna, that's going to have a cascading, we can't do this, and then we can't do this, this and this, it may have a cascading effect, but we'll let you know if that arises, so you're welcome.
If you do that, I for one am capable to go on with it.
Yeah, in turn, you can, you can expect flexibility from us.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just another question for the applicant.
Certainly.
You are familiar with the previous special permit and its conditions? I assume you've read it and familiar with it, okay? Because if the board does vote tonight on, on, it's pretty much the same thing. So your, your hours of operation would be nine to ten P M. Monday, uh Sunday through Thursday and Friday and Saturday, nine to eleven. The two uh conditions I would uh recommend, I'll read out to you right now, just so you're aware because you haven't seen them, they're not part of the original permit. Um, Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, please do.
Condition twenty, the applicant shall apply for a building permit within thirty days of issuance of the special permit consistent with number sixteen of the section. Number sixteen is basi- basically says that the special permit is good for four months. And actually, I'll read it to you. Because I did change some of the wording, it has the same effect, it's just I took it out of the zoning code, just so it's consistent. So sixteen reads, the special permit shall lapse. If a substantial use thereof or construction thereunder has not begun except for good cause within twelve months following the filing of a special permit approval, plus the twenty-day wait period with the city clerk. That's basically what that says, so the uh the building permit should be pulled within, should be issued within thirty days of the special permit, consistent with that. So starting, starting as of the twenty, at the end of the twenty-day appeal period, you have thirty days to.
After, after the twenty-day appeal.
Correct, you have thirty days to pull it over.
Okay, I don't see that.
Does that, does that apply for or issue? We don't have any control of the time it takes to issue?
Apply for, yeah, that's how it reads. Number twenty-one, the applicant shall reach substantial completion of the project within six months of issuance of the special permit consistent with number sixteen of the section.
Do you want to add the gate for the fence?
Yes. Yeah, the gate for the fence.
Is that part of the special permit or site plan?
Well, it's really.
Would you trust me?
It's really a site plan, but I mean, it's, it's.
We'll send you an updated sketch, Trevor, for that, the short gate.
Yeah, if you could, I don't really think that needs to go into the divisions.
That's, that's not a real showstopper, that's, that's routine that you.
Yeah, it's semi-marked up sketch. I honestly didn't see it on the, I didn't notice on the sketch you mentioned. Yeah, I think, I think it's important to.
It doesn't make sense, it doesn't make sense.
Okay. Thanks.
Any further questions or discussion? Very well, into tight emotion. This would be for.
The board to adopt the site plan as presented.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion made and seconded to approve the definitive site plan. Any further discussion? Mr. Beauregard.
Mr. Chairman, just a note for the applicants, uh the only condition on the uh site plan approval is reference to the special permit decision dated November eleventh, two thousand twenty-three, if the board still votes. That's, that's basically the only condition there.
Yeah, it's all the conditions, it's, they're in the special permit.
Yeah.
All right, very well, motion made and seconded to approve the definitive site plan for the Seven Point in Massachusetts project. By the roll, please, Mr. Schwartz.
Yes.
Mr. Patez.
Yes.
Mr. Cormier.
Yes.
Mr. Cormier?
Yes.
I also vote yes. Motion carries. Next would be the special permit. I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion, we issue the special permit?
All second. Motion made and seconded to issue the special permit with conditions that are detailed within the special permit itself. All right, very good, again, by the roll, Mr. Schwartz.
Yes.
Mr. Patez.
Yes.
Mr. Cormier?
Yes.
Mr. Cormier?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. Motion carries. All right, good.
Thank you very much.
You're quite welcome, good evening.
Good night, gentlemen.
All right, old business is blank. Uh, do you have anything, your old business that might not have made it to the agenda? I don't think so, but.
Look, we're just going to talk about upcoming meetings and days and times that are good for the board. Is that, is that underneath the, yeah, so.
Yeah.
Good night. That's under announcements news article for this.
Yeah, we can move on section four, uh twenty twenty-three meeting schedule, proposed meeting time changed.
So I was just wondering if the board um would be willing to move the meetings up from seven to six-thirty.
I'm here all night, I mean, give me an extra half an hour after the meeting to get home
and eat dinner if I haven't had chips before.
Bottom line, it's an awful long day for staff.
Six-thirty. Meetings are going to be moved up to, we're moving.
From what, from what to what?
From seven to six.
It would help me out a lot.
If I could vote, I'd vote yes.
You too, right, Chris?
You know, if you, if you want to discuss another time too, that's fine with me, I'm just, I'm.
Four thirty.
Right after work.
I'm, I'm really flexible, so.
I question, if you're going to move it to six-thirty, uh why not six? Would that, is that just too close to the hour, supper hour or?
It's up to you. I, I would just say that we really need to keep in mind the public also.
Yeah.
And a lot of the people in the public do work, um you know, and then they have to get home and eat, and then, yeah, so. Yeah, if it doesn't work, I mean, we don't get a ton of public participating in these meetings. Depending on the project, I, you know, I, I do foresee potentially that open space project coming forward soon, so that's something that we may generate some um, some good participation in. So I would just, I, I just, I didn't want to be too, you know, by recommending a six o'clock to, to extremes. As long as I, six-thirty.
Doesn't work, we can always change it again.
He's quite right, it isn't, it isn't all about us.
Do we need a vote, do we need a motion, or else it's just a discussion, it doesn't matter?
I, I think we should probably vote on it.
Okay, make a motion that we move our monthly meeting to six-thirty.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to move our monthly planning board meetings from seven P M. to six-thirty P M. Any discussion? And we'll do it by voice vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
All right, thank you.
Uh, let's see, we've got a letter from Massachusetts Historical Commission, that would be, uh, the Pierce Mansion made it on the list. Yep, that correct?
Yep.
Yeah, I just want, I just, that's just for your own information.
Very good, next meeting will be Tuesday, February fourteenth at six-thirty P M. Summed it up everyone?
I want to say thank you for forwarding those minutes from the uh.
Development review?
Thank you. Yeah, yeah, it does, it just gives us more time to think of things.
More insight.
Yeah. But thank you for doing that.
Yeah, his background and context as DRC minutes are invaluable, so, thank you.
Typically, I do a memo too, but um since there was really no comments because the project was already vetted and approved a couple times, um there really wasn't much to say, so I just, I just sent them the, the minutes, a draft, you know, copy of the minutes.
Perfect, very good.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, motion made and seconded to adjourn. Any discussion? Again, by voice vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Please do not leave tonight without signing those documents here.
You've signed the uh site plan.
There are two documents to sign.
Permit, uh special permit.